If everyone's still here, thank Eugene. All right, what do we leave off here? Ah, the approval of the extension of the street sweeping contract with Lakeshore Clean Unclean Sweep in the amount not to exceed $188,000. Zero cents, here's my motion.
Second.
Questions? Alderman Wesley.
You know, I always look at projects like this about joining other towns to possibly save the cost on it. I take it, Itasca uses the same company, did we ever look at joining with them and possibly saving costs and seeing how many street sweepings they have, or Bensonville, or a surrounding town?
Yeah, we have not looked into doing that. Lakeshore Clean Sweep does also do Itasca's sweepings for them, they do more sweepings than we do a year, they do them on a different schedule than we do. So, in order to do that, would, I mean, we could look into doing it with them, but their, their contract isn't up at the same time as ours is right now, so.
Maybe we could.
Maybe in the future, we could look at.
Maybe we could ask them, okay, if their contract's not up now, maybe if we could talk to the company and try to come up with a plan, do them both at the same time.
Yeah, when they sweep for us, they usually sweep for them on the same weeks, so I'm not 100% sure they'll be a great, we'll be able to leverage a lot of cost savings with them, since they're already using them, the same company that we are. So, I'm not 100% sure that we would find ourselves with a lot of cost savings. The, the sweeping contract, the way that it has come out, is that if we would go with the three-year contract with them, which we've asked for, there'll be no price increase for the first year, which will be four years at the same amount that we've had since the beginning of our contracted status with them. We've had pretty good success since we've gone away from pri- or doing a public sweep in-house, when we used to do it only, you know, five, maybe six times a year, to this 12 times a year. We've also talked to them about modifying the schedule to, to go after the Monday, Tuesday refuge pickup, to hopefully fix some of those issues that we have. Obviously, we're not going to sweep every week, so that's not going to help all the time, but the weeks that we do sweep, we'll sweep after the, the refuge pickup.
Follow up?
I just think that we should just look at sharing things, at least look at it. I mean, I sat here, year after year, saying that we should share projects and stuff like that to possibly save money, at least we could ask the company if they're willing to do that. And see where, where it comes.
I think the first thing is, is working with people from Itasca and/or Bensonville. We are in the process of looking into doing some work with a couple different municipalities on some joint bidding projects, so it's not something that we aren't willing to go about doing, but we can look at doing it in the future for, for this type of contract.
Randy Messina.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, I think you said it, but I just want to confirm, we, this time around in this contract, they're willing to follow up after, when it is time to sweep, they'll, they'll mirror garbage pickup and come afterwards, is that part of this agreement, or it's a ideal?
Stewart.
No, not a week, but when it does happen.
Yeah, we had talked to them about, instead of starting their sweeping on a Monday, to start their sweeping on maybe Wednesday, it usually takes them about a day and a half to go through town. The only problem is that, right now, if they can't make it here on a Monday or Tuesday, because they're also locked into weeks, they normally try to get here on Monday of the week that we have a sweep, if they can't get here on a Monday or Tuesday, like, I think the last week that we had sweeping this year, they came out on Wednesday and Thursday, and they were also here Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, so it's not always going to be Wednesday, Thursday, they're going to be here, but that's what we're going to shoot for. I can't, I mean, you, when you deal with.
Can't write it into terms.
I cannot write it into the terms of the contract, that they have to be here on Monday, or Wednesday and Thursday.
So, we don't lock into a day, it's, if you can make it here, we appreciate it, otherwise the date is a Monday.
The schedule is going to be Wednesday or Thurs- is going to start on Wednesday.
Okay.
That's what we're asking them to do, but if they don't have vehicles, if they have issues, that they can't come till Thursday, or they can't come till Friday.
Right.
Then, we're not going to just have them skip the sweep.
No, we just don't want them to come on a Monday before, I think that's the reoccurring problem, is they don't come, or, excuse me, they come early, and then we know the other problem we have with Flood Brothers, and the chaos of mess, so it just, ideally, whether they come Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, as long as it's after garbage pickup, that would be ideal.
Yes, and we also have to be cognizant of the fact that all garbage that's on the road is not going to be picked up by the sweeper as well, they're not refuge trucks, they are vacuum sweepers, so they're, they're, even if there's, there's a bag of garbage in the parkway that fell out of a Flood Brothers truck, it's not going to get picked up by the sweeper either, so.
Yep.
Alderman Wesley.
Is this the same outfit that did it this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, is this the second year we've been, I mean, is this your second contract with us?
This would be their second contract with us, yes, sir.
Let me ask this question, instead of, instead of going out for bid, then, I'm very excited, can we go out for proposal prices, or do we have to bid it out?
No, you can, this is not, and it's a unique distinction, there's a, it's not a public works project, it sounds like it is, because Mr. York is here reporting on it, but under the Illinois courts, it's not a public works project, it's a maintenance project, so you're not required to, to publicly bid it, the practice, the best practice is to do so, to get, feel what, you know, a sense of the market, but you're not, you're not required to, you can do a request for proposals, you can solicit those proposals if you'd like to, you can do it in a formal or less formal method, but the courts have found that that is a, a maintenance-type issue, as opposed to a permanence, permanent public works improvement.
So, the one that I'm asking at is, I have no problem of proving, I mean, voting yesterday or tonight, but the only drawback I have is, we did it with the contractor for engineers that we went out for RFPs or whatever, I got confused, okay, because these people sharpen their pencils, okay, once you day-figure they locked in a village or something, they don't come back and sharpen their pencil box, oh, I got this contract, this is for the prime days, so I, I'd like to go out in the next couple, next year, or whatever these contracts were, three years, just go out for a price, and see what's left.
Mr. Bunt.
Well, just with engineering, the, the statute doesn't apply to that, to engineers and professional services.
Mr. York.
Yes, um, this company, so this will be the fourth year that they've had the same price, so when you say they don't sharpen their pencil, okay, but they also didn't let the lead out either, and increase our pricing, so, and then, they've had in the contract the last two years of the contract, that they could have done a, a price increase, which they have chosen not to, so they, we've gone three years at the same price, this next year will also be at the same price, which is $3,900 a sweep, and then, we have the possibility of an extension for the next two. After this contract is up, we will then go back out for a rebid, an open bid, mark, open market, just like we did the first time, so I feel like it's prudent to keep, keep this company in for the next two, or next three-year cycle, and, and then move forward after that.
So, is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah, roll call, please.
What?
There is a motion. There's a motion and a second.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
We got items to be considered for future meetings, A, we got engineering standards, January, February, B, Irving Park Road, streetlights to be announced, anything else? Public Works. Nothing?
No.
We'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
I'd like to call the Finance Administration Committee meeting to order, let the note-taker note that all the same people are present, I think, yes. So, we'll start off first to, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last Finance Administration Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to report and recommendation, we'll start off, Brad, you want to start off with the property casualty and workers' comp insurance renewal?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've done the past number of years, have to renew our property casualty workers' compensation insurance, since 2013, we've had Mezaro, now technically Alliant Mezaro, as our broker for those services. Last year, you may recall, we did a pretty heavy marketing canvassing of the marketplace, wound up staying with the same package we had had this year, they did a little bit of a softer marketing, kind of, you know, you don't want to go back every year, you become boy who cries wolf after a while, if you keep going heavy every year, so after doing all of that, they came back this year with a package price net increase of only $738 on, call it $440,000, which is less than two tenths of a percent, which is pretty remarkable. And as outlined in the memo, the property casualty side of it went down a little bit, the workers' comp went up a little bit, that's a function of salary, so as salaries rise, that's going to go up a little bit, so, kind of the nature of the beast with that, so the structure, the packages, all the coverage limits are the same as they've been in the previous years, so we just need a motion to approve that package with Hanover Brit and IPRF, and then we'll prepare the appropriate resolutions to accept.
Seems like a no-brainer, is there a motion on the floor?
I make the motion approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Next up, city code revisions, Brad, I'll pass that to you again.
Yes, sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm largely going to defer to the attorney on this one, but just, big picture, you know, in our continuous efforts to clean up various parts of the city code, especially as the mayor alluded to last week, infamous, everybody gets a hard copy of the code, which is outdated before the time we even place the order, that's one of the code sections that's in here to get updated, found a number of them in section one, and then a couple other various sections throughout, saw the authority attorney for this, and also kind of the timing of getting this, I don't know if it'll be next meeting or January.
Yeah, so, a lot of these are simply outdated, we had, you know, one of the sections under the municipal funds refers to a bank that no longer exists, so those are the kinds of cleanup, there's nothing that is going to be materially altering the authority of the city council, deferring it all to the city manager, or city attorney, or finance director, anything of that nature, but there are a number of these items, and so what we want to do is present those to you with a recognition that they may appear to address a number of code sections, but they're relatively nominal changes to the code, and really, it's the practice that we've been employing all along, because those simply are not applicable, so the, the, I guess I would defer to see what your preference would be, I think that it might, certainly my preference would be to, I don't want to pile on, but give you all of these, recognizing that they are, you know, we're not looking at a wholesale alteration, but just a cleanup, and, and just address those cleanup provisions, and have a draft of those with a, and if you want a marked in a clean, or a clean copy, just saying here's what they are with a little description, so, and we could have that for you next week.
Yep, as, as chairman, I'd ask you just do an executive summary, unless anybody here is opposed, we don't need 300 pages in the book, or in our packets, unless Alderman Eugene Wesley would like one, okay, so if you can just do an executive summary, that should be sufficient for the board, anything else on that? Any direction, any other direction you need?
I think that's pretty clear for us.
Oh, they need a motion to approve?
Well, you'll, yeah, but I mean, if that, that's consistent, if, that, that should be included, but that would be the direction to be clear for us, once you take action, I think.
Okay, so we need action, is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
And what is that motion?
The motion is to approve staff recommendation.
Excellent, second?
I said second.
Okay, roll call, she doesn't have, do you, no, I know that, do you have the motion?
Yes.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, so, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
So, this next topic, I think, will we need Nick out for this one?
I'll start and then.
Okay, so, I'll pass it off to Brad to talk about IT infrastructure updates, pre ERP, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, brace yourselves, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve.
No, you won't, please don't. Please don't.
Randy's saying brace yourself.
I got a second. I highly recommend, I highly recommend to the council that we listen to the changes to the proposal, okay, so you have a second, are there any questions, I should, I should hope?
Yeah, no, I can give us a second.
Okay, go ahead, okay, please, okay, trust me.
Ask good questions, Randy.
Yeah, sure, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion and a second to approve.
I made the motion.
Are we calling this a change order, or are we calling?
Top fest.
Okay, I'll pass it off to you, Brad.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, as you're all aware, we are in the process of looking to secure a new ERP system, do the implementation, whatnot, so half of this project was already identified in the CIP as something that would need to be done before the ERP went into place, that would be the awesomely called hyper-convergence cluster for virtualized infrastructure, that was.
That's what I call it.
That was in the CIP already, that project, so what has come up, though, in talking with the ERP vendors, is these additional Microsoft licenses for the newer versions, and the short version on that is, if we implement with the current licenses, we'll effectively have to re-implement the ERP once we migrate to the new licenses, so we're going to have to migrate at some point anyways, and all it's going to do if we don't do it now is cost us more time and more money in the future, so, while a little bit of a sticker shock today, it's going to be, provide for a more efficient, smoother, and ultimately more cost-effective implementation down the road of the ERP system, and then I would defer to Mr. Case for anything past that.
Mr. Case, I'd like to have a few, have a few words with you, if possible. Before I field any questions, I'd like to ask a few to Nick, so these licenses, are these for what, on-premise licenses that need to be renewed, or, and that was my first question, and then, two, with the move to cloud, did you look at the option of moving the SaaS cloud-based licensing?
Absolutely, so to answer the first question, the licenses are Microsoft licenses for both server operating systems, our SQL database, as well as our Exchange Mail Server.
Okay, let me stop you there, because I want this in layman's terms, your SQL database, can you explain to the rest of the council what the purpose is of that, please, because it's pretty important to justify the cost, so please.
Yeah, and, and it will become more important, the ERP is going to run on top of a SQL database, so currently, we're using SQL for a few other miscellaneous programs, not our current solution.
Can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
A database, database, gentlemen, stores the data, that was the, that was my hope, so as we continue to add data, and the police get their, their cameras, we need to store that footage somewhere, so please go ahead.
Correct, and, yeah, our current ERP solution does not run on SQL, runs on Progress, which is obviously going away, so we will need, it, it would be advisable to buy the newest version of SQL to run the ERP software on top of.
And if we run the program without these requested updates, what, what's in jeopardy?
Good question, I can't really say what's in jeopardy or not, but what's going to happen is, when we do make the improvements in the next budget year or two, we're going to have to, as Brad mentioned, re-implement ERP, so we're going to have to have the vendor come back in and remove all of the data that we've collected onto a new database.
And, and moving that, shifting that to another data warehouse or upgrading, is there a risk of losing some of that data?
There's always risks involved, it's difficult, it's, it's not easy to move very large databases back and forth.
So, if we don't do this upgrade, will the ERP be as optimal, or perform as optimal as it should be?
Yeah, again, it's not recommended to run new software on top of old software, essentially.
And so, we think about infrastructure costs, you, going to the cloud version of this, right, did you investigate that?
The, the cloud, well, the cloud, you can run all of these in a cloud infrastructure, for example, Amazon, AWS, there, there's a lot of different options for that.
Like, Microsoft has Azure, right? They're cloud, so if we're doing Microsoft, can't we do it, where we do a subscription-based infrastructure with them?
Sure, generally, our licensing and how it works, for example, our, all of our servers and our SQL are O8, so we keep them for a long time without upgrading in between, because it's more cost-efficient, so if we move to an online platform, for example, I was really interested in doing that with Exchange, it's going to cost us more in the long term, our ROI on two year, will, will be paid off in two years, whereas two years of cloud, and anything after that is just pure cost, so.
Can you talk about virtualization, you said some big words, even for me, too, big words?
Sure.
And I'm in the industry, but, virtualization of the servers, can you talk about the value of doing that?
Absolutely, so we'll start with hyper-convergence, which is simply a different method of building your hardware, so hyper-convergence is one piece of hardware that has a, your storage, so your hard drives, let's call it, and all your computing power, as well as the, the means for them to communicate in one package.
Right.
The benefit of that is, you can then stack them, so if we need more resources, we're not buying more servers, we're buying an extra, what's called a node.
So, could I stop you for a second?
Sure.
Servers are hardware, right?
Correct.
Hardware is physical tangible things that, not a bunch of DV, not a bunch of VCRs you have in there.
Yes.
Correct, so we have a server room, is that part of the server room?
That is not.
Okay, so we have a separate server room, right?
We have, yeah, multiple.
So, if we don't virtualize, essentially you may need additional servers to accomplish what we're looking to do with this new ERP?
Yes and no, so there are two forms of a server, a server is hardware, and a server is software.
Okay.
And that, that's kind of an important distinguishing factor, because what we're purchasing is a hardware level to run virtual servers on, so the virtual servers are the operating system level, so what we can do in a virtualized environment is spin up servers without purchasing more hardware, so, right now, it's a one-to-one, we want a server, we buy the hardware, we buy the software.
I think we did good, I think we have a motion, we have a second, does everybody feel comfortable now?
You asked all the questions, I don't think most of us understand it.
Even the questions, I thought the questions would help simplify.
The questions will fine, but half of them did.
Okay, all right, so there's a second, okay, let's open up the questions.
You answered them all.
I didn't, you got all your questions answered?
No.
Okay, Mayor?
Just so I understand, so, all I understand, understood was, we have to do this step before we take the next step, otherwise, we're going to be messed up, right, so this is a necessary step.
Not required, if you want to.
Required, but highly, highly advised, it also is in the budget, and the hardware portion of this, this is a two-part, the hardware portion was budgeted for, the software portion is off of state bid, so it, the pricing's going to be the same no matter what.
So, then the hyper-conversion is perfect.
What about the flux capacitor?
That's extra.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So, I have two questions, so, this is the part that we need, okay, to get the whole entire city on the same software, on the same program, eventually, correct, or no?
Keyword, eventually, yes.
How long will that take?
How long will, will what, the implementation of virtualizing our environment, or?
So, I'm going to spend $64,500 right now.
Sure, go ahead, Eugene, Alderman Wesley, sure, go ahead.
Okay, so, my question is, so, time we get the city all on the same page, that we've been working on for several years now, that still ain't done, will this be obsolete?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
The beauty of a hyper-converged cluster of nodes is you can keep adding new nodes to it and expanding your infrastructure without having to do any more modifications.
Okay, Nick, hold on, Alderman Wesley, in, in the words of the mayor, now we, we did the waste treatment plant, and we built for the future, the idea is, some of the storage is going to be a lot, but it's going to save us money and time down the road, because we're, we're doing that upfront, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, for example, we can look at the, you mentioned the treatment plant and the SCADA system, so that we have SCADA servers that are virtualized over there, they're run by not onsite staff, it was done years ago, what, we're going to need to replace that server eventually, what we can do is add a node there, and it just connects and everything syncs, and it's, there's backup, there's redundancy, it's, you know.
Raising my hand for myself, but essentially, the data's never going to get, yeah, we're never going to get less data, we're only going to get more data, the footage from, let's, very blamen term example, the footage from the police vest cameras, that's never going to go away, it's only going to expound and compound, and we're going to get more and more and more data, so essentially, we're going to need space to store this somewhere, right?
Correct.
This allows this to happen?
And, and with a very easy method of expansion.
Okay, Alderman Eugene Wesley, any other questions?
Yes, I have one other question, so, is this the only provider that could, could give this to us?
So, there's two.
Because I only see one price.
There's two levels of this, we did get multiple quotes from a provider, but how pricing works, scale is unique equipment, so there are other providers who do a hyper-converged infrastructure, but their equipment and their backplane, their hypervisor are all different, so scale is, is the most optimal solution for what we want, and by pricing it out, we achieve quotes from three different vendors, and scale essentially determines pricing, they sell through resellers only, and they, they set the pricing, so this was the most optimal pricing we could get, and I will add that the, it also helped that the Director of Sales for Scale is a Wooddale resident, and really helped us out with pricing a lot.
Okay, so, again, I would like to see, I wait, I'm the chairman, no, you wait to it, what? Wait, yes, go ahead, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
My question is, again, I stress that, if you talked to another company already and got prices, why are we not getting them?
I, I don't care, but let me see them. Please, Nick, go ahead.
So, the, I, I didn't think to include them in the packet, because the additional pricing was over $80,000, so I just included the lowest pricing, I can, I can get to that information, we have it.
So, so Nick, just so, I, I understand, is there going to be an implementation partner, it sounds like we are working through a business partner or reseller of Microsoft, is that reseller, or business partner, or implementation partner, whatever we're going to call them, is that, is there an extra cost for their services, or is this stuff you're going to be able to handle in-house?
Most of it will be handled in-house, they're, they're, built into part of this quote is some of the maintenance support and service migration, so Scale will help guide us into the migration of the virtual machines, but most of it will be done.
Will you have subscriptions, like, will you have SNS covered, like, if there's an issue, will they cover that, and for how long?
Right now, built into this, they did not charge us, but it's two years, and additionally, at that time, we'll look at if any kind of software, hardware warranties are, are merited, versus.
Will it be, before I go to Alderman Eugene Wesley, after those two years, or Alderman Jacob, will there be maintenance costs every year that we're going to sit up here and have to approve every year?
Likely, they won't be, I mean, they'll be, they'll be far under $10,000, but it, I generally avoid hardware maintenance costs, because it doesn't make fiscal sense, usually, the repair, the placement of the parts, I can do in-house, so it doesn't make sense to pay somebody thousands of dollars for what I can do.
Okay, Alderman Jacob?
Just a comment about the whole ERP, I, I recently attended a meeting with other cities and finance directors that have gone through these ERP systems, and one of the questions was brought up is, what was the biggest failure, and the biggest failure was, the staff did not let the elected officials and people know that this is not going to be a six-month project, I mean, this could take years, so I, I implore both you and Brad to make sure that everybody understands. I implore both you and Brad to make sure that everybody understands, this isn't a two-week project, this is going to take some time to do this whole project.
Correct, and right now, we're doing the backend, and you're 100% right, and we're building that infrastructure to put the ERP onto. So once we actually sign contracts and whatnot, we're looking at, like, and I've said it numerous times, 24 to 36 months, so two to three years before it's completed. It's a very large, very long project.
But it's going to change, it's going to completely change the way the city is run. Essentially, it's going to help us forecast budget plan.
It's going to change everything, the way we do business, absolutely.
Okay, and it's going to be better for us to get reports and faster, because I've been promised that multiple times.
Correct.
Okay, so Alderman Tony Catalano?
So Nick, how does this new software address hackers or cyber criminals or the Russians?
It doesn't. It really doesn't, it's standard server operating system, there's a lot to the security world, a lot I don't want to necessarily mention online, but the newer operating systems are obviously more secure, older ones are as well, as long as our patch, so patch management is important, but there is a lot more to, to, to security than server operating system.
Maybe you can help us with that. All right, any other questions?
Was there a market for my Rolodex that I made to sell? My database?
Your database? We have a motion, we have a second, we have any other questions? Roll call, yep.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
All right, we, before we move on, we have one more thing from Attorney Bond?
Yeah, just, just to give you an update, and I apologize for the lateness of this, but this just happened late this afternoon, but we did, and I don't want to get into a lot of details, but if you recall, we had an issue with the water treatment plant. In 2014, there were lien claims filed against the, against the contractor, the city withheld the liquidated damages pursuant to the contract, and we've reached the end of the project. At the last city council meeting, you approved an interim payment to Maxim Cabo was one of the subcontractors who filed a mechanic's lien, so that was an interim. We are now at the point where we're ready to make the final payout, and I just wanted to let you know that, that'll go directly to council at the next meeting, next Thursday. Essentially, and you'll get the accounting of it, but the, the city has withheld $267,500 in liquidated damages. The amount due and owing over and above that for the contract is $162,771. In other words, that's what the full contract price, we already, we're already made whole, so we're obligated legally to, despite what you might have thought about the delay, we were, we were compensated for that delay, so that will come before you next Thursday for disbursement. Part of it will go to pay Cabo for the lien they had against Maxim, the other one will go to, the balance of it will go to Maxim. So just a heads up, because generally, that would be on your, you know, your committee and for discussion, and I'm certainly available for any questions, if you're talking anything that might be sensitive to the litigation, to any potential litigation, I'll certainly talk to you after the meeting, but just so you know, and that will come before you, and that will finalize, close out that project. And again, the city is, was made whole, and not only were we made whole, but we also retained $267,500 of the $9 million total contract amount.
May I make a comment, so that $267,000, that was money that was budgeted toward the project, we thought was spent, that's coming back to the city?
No, we withheld that money, we never paid now.
We never paid, oh, we withheld it from the bond.
And we withheld, actually, we stopped, we stopped paying out as soon as things started to go south on that, so that's why, and we've now withheld more than we're entitled to, we're entitled to the 267, five, the balance of it has to go back under the Prompt Payment Act, we're required to remit that to, to them. So that's the, so we held it back, so we were always ahead of the game, that's been our practice ever since we've represented the city, and we've never had to chase the money, which is the alternative.
So do we net anything off of this?
Well, you got a, you got an 8 million, or 9,429,790 dollar project, and you got it for $267,500 less than the contract.
Does that go back in the general fund, Brad?
Portion.
Or CIP?
Well, since it was related to the treatment plant, and that, it did go stay in the water fund, the water and sewer fund, since that's the fund that it was, the cost in the project itself was germane to, it stayed in that, that department.
So is that going to be put towards the water rates, or is that part of a reserve fund? Because I know the fund needs to equal zero, correct? We're not trying to make money, but if you're dropping 267 grand in there, that's a good amount of money.
Yeah, it's staying in there, I mean, based upon what we need to raise each year, you know, over one, six, seven million, I mean, it's helpful, but it's not.
Afraid of cost.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Okay, anything else? Good. All right, items to be considered at future meetings, fiscal year 2019 CIP on January 11th, Sister Cities update in February, fiscal year 2019 budget on February 22nd.
Anything else, Bob?
Don't keep us in suspense.
Hold on, I move my mouse. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, just as information from the ONCC, that Chicago was going back and forth to upgrade their phone system, and now the logging system or the phone system to log the airplane complaints and going online will have the, I think it's called the Captiva feature, where you have to log on and go, I'm not, after you go through the form, you have to say, I'm not a robot, look at the pictures, click on the things,